Howell Township Planning Board Special Meeting, Tuesday, November 22, 2022. I hereby declare this special meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on November 14, 2022, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on November 14, 2022, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on November 14, 2022, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Members of the public will have a chance to ask questions and comments on applications once the Chairman opens the hearing up to the members of the public. If you wish to ask questions or comments on an application, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand feature, and we will bring you into the meeting one at a time. You will need to have audio and video capability. You will be sworn in, and you will need to provide your name and address. For anyone calling in, you can press *9 to raise or lower your hand, and *6 to mute or unmute yourself. This meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Pledge of Allegiance, please. Good, everybody, please. Roll call, roll call. Never mind.
Mr. Bavai was excused. Mr. Cristiano.
Present.
Mr. Gerardo.
Here.
Mr. Greenfield.
Here.
Mr. Husser. I have not heard from. Mr. Nacastro was excused. Mr. Seaman, I do not see on the meeting. Councilman Bonovich. Mr. Spanville was excused. Ms. Talente.
Here.
And Chairman Tannenhouse.
Here. And please log in to my computer.
Okay.
Okay, can everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for all of our first responders and those both serving here and abroad. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I apologize again for all of the technical difficulties. Any correspondence?
No correspondence.
Correspondence, please.
I have no correspondence.
Okay, applications for the Board, case number SP-1085, AAFHW Property LLC, Foreman Family.
Perfect. Mr. Chair, are we in?
Yeah, we're in. We see him as a face.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board members, Board professionals, and public. My name is Kenneth Pape. I'm an attorney with Heilbronn Pape, and I have the privilege and responsibility of representing your applicant this evening.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Just before Mr. Pape continues, I just want to sort of bring the Board and the public up to speed with regard to where we are tonight and what the purpose of tonight's meeting is. The Board may recall, this applicant had previously appeared before us seeking approval for this particular location. There was a tie vote that night, which means that the application was statutorily denied. The applicant, after that, filed an action in lieu of prerogative writs in Superior Court challenging the Board's decision. The parties took that opportunity to have some discussions, and the applicant decided to go back and address some of the areas that they believed were of issue with the Board and the public, and they revised the plan, and you'll hear what the revisions are tonight. So, the way that the process works, when there's a settlement of litigation in a land use matter, the settlement doesn't approve a particular plan. What it does is it allows the applicant to come back and have what's called a Whispering Woods hearing. So, that's, and that's named after a case. It's called Whispering Woods v. Middletown. So, we're here tonight for the Whispering Woods hearing. So, what the applicant is going to do is present the modifications it has made in the plan from the last time it was here. The applicant will then be open to questioning, just the way any applicant is, from the Board members and also their professionals, will be subject to cross-examination from members of the public. Members of the public, excuse me, will also have an opportunity to testify as to what they think about the application. And at the end, the Board will take a vote. The Board is not required, under the law, at the outset to approve it. What it is required to do is hold the hearing in order to elicit the formal testimony from both the applicant as well as other interested parties. So, that is what we are here for tonight. That's what Mr. Pape will present tonight, and we will see, you know, how it progresses. But that's how we got from there to here, and the importance of tonight, again, is understanding what the revisions have been to the plan, listening to the testimony of both the applicant and the public, and then we will take a vote. Okay, you can continue, Mr. Pape.
Ron, I'm sorry, just so I can clearly understand. So, we still vote on this application like normal, and it's?
Yes.
Okay.
The vote that you took previously was to have this hearing. It wasn't a vote to approve anything. It was a vote to allow this hearing to progress.
Got it. Thank you. Mr. Pape, please continue.
Sure, surely. Mr. Chairman, Board members, appreciate Mr. Cuchero's opening remarks to the Board. So, this is an application that was initially presented to the Board in the fall. It would be for you in September and October of that year. And as indicated, the application was not approved. The vote was a 3-3 tie, which, as Mr. Cuchero indicated, is statutorily a denial. Then the litigation followed, and this past summer, the litigation was resolved in a settlement agreement that was dated August 10, 2022. It was resolved conditionally, and the resolution was based on a presentation of a plan that was referred to in the settlement agreement as Sketch F., dated July 27, 2022, called the amended plan. And what we have this evening is the Sketch F. that has been worked into a true site plan for presentation to the Board. The settlement that was entered into on August 10, 2022 expressly requires that there be a Whispering Woods hearing, and as Mr. Cuchero indicated, this is that Whispering Woods hearing. The settlement includes language. In the event the application is not approved, or it's approved with unacceptable conditions, then the settlement is set aside, and the applicant and the Board return to the litigation. The plans have been amended, and I'm not testifying, but by way of a brief summary, the plans have been amended. Building B has been rotated 180 degrees, changing the direction of the loading area, significant change. A sound attenuation wall system has been incorporated into the plan. The building B truck court is 70 feet in width. The site entrance widths are now 20 feet off of Howell Road. There have been some modifications to the driveways. The utility area, including the water tank, well house, irrigation house, have been reconfigured and moved further from Howell Road, and there has been some grading and stormwater management facilities, utilities, and landscape modifications to accommodate all of those revisions I've just outlined. The presentation tonight will be made by three professionals on behalf of the applicant. Patrick Lyneum is our professional engineer. He remains the design engineer for this project. When we began in September, his credentials were placed on the record, and he was found, he was accepted as an expert. And before he testifies this evening, I'll ask Mr. Cuchero if he wishes for those to be credentials again on the record. Joseph Fischinger is a professional engineer. He's our traffic expert, and he has some brief testimony on traffic, and I say brief because there's almost no changes in the traffic from that which we presented the last time. Christine Cuffone is our professional planner. There are some variances and waivers that are part of this plan, and Ms. Cuffone will address them. As Mr. Cuchero has indicated in his opening remarks to you, the application presented tonight is intended to address the revisions to the plans. We are responsible for identifying the revisions to the plans. We do not intend to revisit all the elements of the plan that remain unchanged. It should be noted that except for the revisions placed on the record tonight, all other commitments and all other representations and the record that was made by the applicant before this Board in September and October of 2021 remains commitments of the applicant to the Board and to the township. And with permission, our first witness will be Patrick Lyneum. I return to Mr. Cuchero. He was sworn at the September hearing. His credentials are on the record. How do you wish for us to proceed?
Well, just re swear him and re-qualify him for the record. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this Board as the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
It's Patrick Lyneum, P-A-T-R-A-C-K, Lyneum, L-Y-N-A-M, and I'm a graduate of New Jersey Institute of Technology, which with a bachelor's in civil engineering. I have 20 years in site civil engineering profession. I have a New Jersey professional engineering license in good standing, and I have previously testified before the Howell Township Planning Board.
Thank you. Will accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lyneum, I'm going to ask if you could begin by introducing the exhibit that you intend to rely upon during your testimony.
Yes, I'm going to share my screen. See, this is Exhibit A12, which is the buffer exhibit, and stated September 1 of 2022. It's the new site layout, which includes a colorized version of the landscape plan along the buffers, along the farmland buffer to the west and the residential buffer to the east.
And, Mr. Lyneum, would you confirm on the record that this exhibit was provided to the township, so it was more than 48 hours before the hearing?
Yes, yes.
Going to ask if we're going to do a little bit of fact-building before we go through the revisions, would you place on the record the lot and block and the address of the property?
Yeah, so the subject site is Block 164 in Lot 5.01. The address is 29 Howell Road, and it's located with frontage along Howell Road to the east, and Oakerson Road and Michael Curtin Lane to the north, and bypass 33 to the south.
The zone district of this property, Mr. Lyneum?
Yes, it's, the property's located in a special economic development zone district.
And the size of the property, please?
Yes, the property is 29.54 acres.
There are two buildings shown on the plan. Would you place the size of those buildings on the record?
Yes, Building A to the west is 325,737 square feet, and Building B to the east is 98,828 square feet.
Trust that those are the same-sized buildings that were on the plans when we were before the Board in 2021?
Yes, correct.
If you could identify the source of potable and firefighting water supply, and if you could identify the sanitary sewer that will be incorporated into the plan?
Sure, the onsite wells are proposed for potable water and fire water supply. A fire water tank is proposed to provide fire flow and pressure to the fire suppression systems within the building. There are multiple onsite low-pressure pump stations that are proposed for sanitary sewer service. A force main pumping the sanitary sewer is proposed for along 33, along Howell Road to Business 33, and then east along Business 33 to Fairfield Road, which then it turns south, which discharges to a regional pump station on Fairfield Road.
Okay. And this, the tank that's part of the firefighting system, that's the same tank, I think you indicated you moved it further away from the roof, it's the same tank that was part of the system in the original design, correct? The testimony in the original hearing that you presented is that the tank would have to have adequate water supply and that, say, 25 feet in height. Those remain your statements?
Correct.
If you could identify, and identify, I think what's significant now is all of what you just shared with the Board are elements of the plan that were in place when we were before the Board in 2021. Now, if you would be so, the revisions to the plan.
Sure, so concentrate along the east side of development. So, a sound attenuation fence was added along the east side, along the buffer line. As mentioned before, Building B was, the loading was facing east. Now, it's been rotated 180 degrees, so the loading's now facing west to the interior of the site. And the truck court is now 70 feet to accommodate circulation. The Howell Road entrance area is adjusted to 20, 20 feet to accommodate the updated circulation. There is now a one-way ingress to the parking for Building B on this south portion of the parking lot. It does maintain two-way access because there is two-way access permitted to the north around the building. As mentioned before, the utility area, located roughly in the center of the site, was consolidated because we're using low-pressure pump stations, and that afforded us the opportunity to shift the tank in closer to the interior site, further away from Howell Road. To accommodate all these changes, there is also updates to the grading, stormwater manager facilities, utilities, landscape lighting, and other ancillary, ancillary site improvements to accommodate those, those primary changes.
That sound attenuation wall system that you just referenced, what is the proposed height of that attenuation wall?
The proposed height is 15 feet on top of the retaining wall.
And if you could identify the location and the modifications that you've made to the retaining walls on the site?
Yeah, so the retaining wall is at the residential buffer line at 50 foot, and the attenuation wall is on top of it, and in order to accommodate the changes, the wall did not change in height at all.
And I trust that your direction of stormwater flow has not changed?
Correct.
Do you confirm that there are no open spaces in the sound attenuation and/or the retaining walls?
That is confirmed.
You confirm that variance relief may be required for this design? The sound wall is greater than four feet in height, and accordingly, some variance relief will be required to include it in the plan?
That is correct.
And if you could confirm that the court, that the sound attenuation wall's location is specifically to deflect sound from the residential properties, and its location is in part within the buffer on that side of the property?
That is confirmed.
We'll need, we'll need a variance for that. You could, the driveway system, it's, you have a number of driveways, and you have a fairly sophisticated method of ingress and egress to both Oakerson and Howell. Know that these plans have been scrutinized by Chief Lewis. I personally spent yesterday afternoon with him going over them. And would you take us through the dimensions of the driveway system?
Yes, so, starting on Howell Road, we have a 20-foot ingress lane and then a separate 25-foot egress lane, and they enter into a 30-foot main aisle, which continues around the site, and then the driveway at Oakerson includes a 25-foot ingress and two lanes for egress, a 15-foot left turn lane and 18-foot right turn lane. And, and those have been approved by the fire chief.
And, Mr. Chairman, Board members, I did get to see Chief Lewis yesterday. I was waiting for him to return from his time off, and when I saw him yesterday, he was kind enough to go through this entire plan, and he was also kind enough to update his, his fire review letter to indicate that, and what he indicated in that plan was that the project roadway width, as shown on the plan, dated October 26, 2022, meet the needs of the Fire Department for apparatus placement, for which we were most grateful. We could continue.
Mr. Pape, I got a question for you. His, his letter also indicated if there was going to be any gates.
Say that again, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
His, his, his report also indicated if there was going to be any gates. Those would have to be reviewed by him. No gates?
No gates proposed.
Thank you.
We, we, we also, he gave us the fire lane details. All of, Patrick, you'll use Chief Lewis's fire lane details and place them on the plan?
Yes.
And respond to radio coverage will be incorporated into the buildings if that is Fire Chief Lewis's direction, indicating that he'd reserve that, reserve that. Okay. There's some curb depressions, I mean handicap curb depressions along the curb that all faces the car parking, but you don't have depressions along the side of the building where there is no parking. You could confirm that, and then you think we'll ask this Board for a waiver for not having handicap depressions on those sides of the building where there's no, where there's no parking? You could just give us the details of that?
Yes, that's, so that is, that is correct. The, the curb ramps are provided 16 feet or less in spacing where head-on parking is proposed up against the sidewalks, and that is to facilitate customers or employees or patrons coming from the parking area into those sidewalk and continuing to the building. The, what we're asking for relief are areas that are to the north of Building A, where you could see we're connecting the pedestrian circulation system to Oakerson, where there's no head-on parking. There are handicap ramps shown where necessary at the crossings. Also, there are areas to the south of Building B, similarly, there are no depressions because there's no head-on parking. There's no reason to come out into the, the drive aisle, and handicap ramps are provided along that pedestrian path where the pedestrian path crosses the drive aisles.
You have bollards for head-on parking?
We don't have bollards for head-on parking.
We're going to gladly add them.
Yeah, Mr. Pape, I just, I just got a text from, from Paul this, this afternoon about an incident in Massachusetts.
Duly noted. Thank you.
Welcome.
Landscaping, if you could confirm that the landscaping plan that you worked on with Jennifer Bean, Laura Newman, Shari Spiro at the first hearing, all of those elements remain, except as necessary to accommodate the 180-degree turning of the building that you just described?
That's correct.
And for the record, Mr. Chair and Board members, there is a technical requirement of landscaping along the edge of the building where the loading docks are located. We have not put a landscaping bed along the building where the loading docks are located. I think we could say for logical reasons. It is the same as we had presented it previously. I believe that your ordinance calls out a waiver for which we are requesting relief. Our solid waste and recycling system is a modern system. We have compactors for our trash, and we collect and store inside the building our recyclables. Mr. Lyneum, if you could just take us through that design?
Yeah, so each building is, is, provides two compactors at the north and south ends of the building, buildings, and then that handles the refuse for the, for the buildings, and then, as Mr. Pape mentioned, all recyclables are stored in the building until a private hauler comes out, and then it's wheeled out, disposed of, and wheeled back into the building.
These compactors sitting on the ground are adjacent in all instances to a loading ramp. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That loading ramp in some way part provides some screening from the travel, to the traveling public, visibility of the compactors. Is that correct?
Correct.
But I, we're not relying on that for the screening. There are landscaped islands at the end of the trailer storage area, and that, let those landscaped islands are substantially landscaped, and that is what we're relying on for screening. Again, Mr. Lyneum, an accurate statement?
That is correct.
With your cursor, if you could just indicate to the Board members and all who are listening where those islands are that I've described that are so landscaped?
Sure, I'm going to reference A1, which is the, the set of site plans. And I'm going to go to the landscape plan.
Can we just pause for a second here? Eileen, I think Mr. Gerardo has his hand up, wanting to get, I guess he got kicked out. He's been on there for, for He's been on there for, for a while now, but I believe you need Mr. Lyman to just stop sharing a screen for a second to let him in.
No, I can, I can get him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is he back in?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
I heard the whole thing, so.
Okay, cool. So um, so yeah, referring to the landscape plans as part of uh, Exhibit A1, I'm gonna zoom in to the areas, the compactor you can see, for instance, in Building A to the northwest corner, the compactor is located in the first uh, or the, the second loading bay. The first is the ramp. And the reason why the, the ramp provides some, a portion of the screening is because the ramp is actually going up to the finished floor, while the grade for the compactor is actually going down four feet below uh, the ramp. Uh, nevertheless, there are uh, land, substantial landscaping and evergreen screening provided uh, around the, the corners of the building to help screen the compactors.
And is that condition the same for all four compactors?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, because our trash is not in a cubicle for a, a rollout trash receptacle, this design technically requires waiver relief for which we are requesting. If you could, if you would, Mr. Lyman, if you could describe the lighting. And the board may recall, Mr. Chairman, you may recall that we had offered an alternative lighting plan that was consistent with IES. Think I have those initials correctly, Illuminating Engineering Society. Um, and not strictly with the township's um, conditions. Patrick, would you take us through those?
Yes, so uh, the, the township ordinance um, requires a, a, a minimum foot candle that is, is lower than what we would recommend as part of the IES. So um, we have designed it to have a minimum of half a foot candle along the um, pedestrian walkways, uh, and that's why we're requesting the relief.
And would you confirm that the IES lighting standards are met with this plan?
That is correct.
Sidewalk system, there are considerable sidewalks on the plan. And we have no issue at all with the sidewalks on the plan. And there were some recommendations in staff's report for sidewalk. And we have no issue with those recommendations. We do not show sidewalks on Michael Curtin Lane. I think that, that is technically a waiver. And I would ask if you could just show us where Michael Curtin Lane is and where we don't show sidewalks.
So Michael Curtin Lane is to the north of the site. It's actually in between Oakerson Public Right-of-Way and the, the subject site. Um, and that, that um, Michael Curtin Right-of-Way is improved. Um, and it, it provides access to a few residents um, along Howell Road. And it's, it's a, like a secondary access for, uh, for the residents who have primary access on Howell Road.
We did not offer sidewalks at the time of the first hearing. And we do not show sidewalks on there and request a waiver for that condition. Um, I can share with-
Chairman, if I could ask a question, if they're seeking the wa- waiver, are they willing to pay into the sidewalk fund?
If that is the ordinance, the answer is yes.
That is the ordinance.
Where is the sidewalk ending? Is it ending right at the uh, the entrance to Michael Curtin Lane? Is that what I'm seeing here?
Yes.
Lyman? Okay.
We had made commitments to the town on the record to make um, to mill and resurface. I just, I just gotta- Help me, what road are we?
Oakerson.
Most likely, yeah, I knew that and I just couldn't get it out. We, we, it was, there was a request made that the applicant mill and resurface Oakerson curb to curb, or I don't know if it's curb to curb, eh, edge of pavement to edge of pavement. And we agreed to do so. The only caveat was that we said it would be Oakerson in front of our property within the township of Howell, because some of Oakerson is in a neighboring town. That commitment continues. We are prepared to do that. For the record, this isn't-
So if I could clarify, it's beyond your frontage, it's the entire portion of Oakerson within Howell Township?
That's the agreement that we made, Ms. Newman, correct.
Thank you, okay.
As long as it's in Howell, we agreed that we would do it. We also, the architectural treatment of the buildings, which was, we spent considerable time on and in fact received some, some positive comments from this beam. There are no changes. You may recall there are a number of elements to the building that were requested. Um, the types of windows, the, the types of louvers. Uh, all of the commitments that are on the record continue. There's also, if you could confirm, Patrick, that there's no change to the proposed signage? You could identify what the signage is uh, on the ground?
Yes, so the applicant is uh, proposing two freestanding signs, one, one at the entrance of Howell Road and one at the entrance of Oakerson Road.
And we also had agreed that there'd be no wall-mounted signs. That was a request of Ms. Dean, and that there are, continue to be no wall-mounted signs on the plan. Um, a, a blanket statement to you, Mr. Chair and the board members, that indicated as we began, all commitments that were made to the board uh, that are part of the record below remain commitments and uh, of this applicant to the board. The only revisions are those that Mr. Lyman has just outlined to you. Mr. Lyman, did we complete a summary of the revisions that your office has made for the plan?
Yes.
And there are some professional reports that have been provided to us. And you could confirm that you have had an opportunity to review both this Bean's and Ms. Newman's reports, Ms. Bean's from August and Ms. Newman's from November eighteenth. And that you will comply with the remaining technical guidance that appears in those reports.
Correct, confirmed.
Um, if you could further confirm that stand corrected, uh, the, the, that is my, my direct examination of Mr. Lyman. Uh, he remains available to the board and the board's professionals and the public and is available to you at this time.
Mr. Pape, I don't know if it's this professional's responsibility to answer the question, but can you please provide some testimony on the environmental commission's report? Looks like they're asking for some additional documentation in regards to infiltration, storm designs, et cetera.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, the, the, we had gone to the environmental commission a number of times. And I think that you know that this applicant and I always go to them. The last report came out on November ninth and we got it last week. And it asked that we return to see them and also asked for some additional information on the stormwater. If you would, Patrick, if you would address the stormwater comments in the environmental impacts report. And I will make a con- confirmation that we will go see the environmental commission if that is their, their request.
Well, before you start with that, i- is there any changes to those systems from the previous application?
Changes to the stormwater system?
Yes, there, there was changes to the stormwater system. And uh, we, we will be supplying uh, a revised geotechnical report to substantiate the, the proposed stormwater design.
Or design was reviewed by Ms. Newman, Mr. Lyman?
Yes.
Would you briefly describe it to be responsive to Chairman Tenon House's inquiry? The revisions?
All the revisions to the stormwater?
In terms that we can understand?
Yeah, well, basically, um, when, when you rotate the building, you know, we had different locations of what we called uh, green infrastructure um, basins. And um, based on the new layout, some of those areas had to shift uh, to other areas where there was available space. And, you know, uh, with, with the new stormwater regs there, we, they encouraged to treat stormwater at the source. So anywhere there's um, landscape areas, we take advantage uh, and, and propose bio-retention in those areas. Um, so anytime we change the layout, eh, there's a high chance that the stormwater is gonna change with it. And that's what happened in this case. So uh, we updated the, the stormwater management, um, green infrastructure locations. Uh, and that in turn required us to go out to the site again and um, and obtain updated geotech um, information to substantiate design. And we intend on supplying that information at a later date.
Okay, so since we're on that- Since we're on that subject, Mr. Pape, um, it- Is this a, did it end up becoming a better project? More, not as good of a project? Can you, can you opine on, on what ended up happening with the updates to the stormwater? I mean, do you have more bio-retention now?
Uh, well, we, we, um, well, there's a certain criteria you have to meet. You gotta have enough bio-retention. You gotta meet um, drainage area, minimum drainage area requirements. There's a whole slew of requirements nowadays on how to um, design it.
Patrick, I think the question is, is did that change? So are you saying that the prior design was not subject to the new stormwater regulations?
No, 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 that's, that's, prior uh, design was subject to the new stormwater regs. And we did comply and we are complying again with the-
So then what the chairman's asking you is, these revisions that you most recently made, is it for a betterment? What made you make those revisions? Because it's the standards.
Building location.
Yeah, the, 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 the fact that just the layout changes. Because there's, there's, yeah.
I get that, I get that point. I just wanted to know, did you, did, did the layout change provide for a better project? That's, that's kind of what I'm getting at.
Oh, as far as stormwater, I mean, it's the same, but you know, the other, the other benefits are, are realized through the sound wall and moving the, the loading to the interior of the site. I think that was the primary focus.
But, but just so I can kind of maybe boil it down to what I think the chairman's asking. I mean, from what I understand your testimony to be, the project became higher quality and better by virtue of the other changes you were previously discussing. And in order to accommodate those changes, there had to be a modification in the stormwater management. The stormwater management didn't markedly improve or do more than the original plan, but it was necessary to modify that plan to accommodate all of the other improvements you had made to the original design.
That is correct.
Is that a fair statement?
That is, that is a fair.
Thank you for summarizing that, Ron.
Yeah, I, I have one bit of punctuation that I'd like to put on that. You made a statement that you will comply with the technical requirements set forth in the staff reports. With specificity, will you indicate that you are aware of the technical requirements for stormwater? And that you will comply with all of those to the satisfaction of Ms. Newman?
That is correct.
When we testified, well, when you testified the last time, I asked you to confirm full compliance of your design with the DEP current standards, full compliance of your design with the township standards, and an affirmative statement that there was no burden on the town that these would be private stormwater systems maintained by the property owner, subject to an O and M manual to be recorded. Please confirm tonight that those all remain accurate statements.
They do, they remain accurate.
Mr. Chair, I have no further direct, before Patrick is completely um, let out of the hot seat, I am gonna ask if he would share with all of us the status of the outside agencies. Uh, we progressed just about all the way through the outside agency approvals, and if he could share that with us.
Sure, so um, I saw Ramons County Planning Board, we received their approval uh, last April. Um, Howell Township Municipal Utilities Department were pending uh, their approval. The Free Old Soil Conservation District, where uh, they've indicated their intent to certify, just waiting on their cer- certification. Uh, with regards to the DEP, uh, we are prepared to submit a application to the DEP for Treatment Works Approval um, for the, for the sewer service after we receive um, approvals from the Township Municipal Utilities Department and Manasquan River Regional uh, Sewerage Authority. Uh, with regards to Howell Township Shatri Commission, um, we have updated reports. And they have uh, indicated uh, their approval. Township Environmental Commission, we, we just went over and we will supply the additional information requested. And the Howell Township Bureau of Prevention was again discussed. And we will comply with their letter as well.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Board members, you're witness.
Does anybody on the board have any questions? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Pape, be next witness, please.
Thank you, thank you, Patrick, don't leave us. Uh, the Joseph Fischinger is a professional engineer. He's our traffic, one of our traffic experts. And I've asked that he present in a summary fashion the traffic elements of the plan and to confirm that they are similar, if not identical, to the original. Mr. Fischinger was not sworn at the last hearing. So if we could have him sworn and share his credentials with you, please.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Sure, it's Joseph Fischinger, F-I-S-H-I-N-G-E-R, Director of Traffic Engineering with Brightview Engineering in Livingston, New Jersey. Um, qualifications very quickly, twenty-five, uh, bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Rutgers University. Twenty-five years of engineering experience. I'm a licensed professional engineer and certified professional traffic operations engineer. I have been qualified in front of the Howell Planning Board previously and my licenses are current.
Thank you, we'll accept your credentials.
Thank you, Mr. Fischinger, if you would. Just, you've heard Mr. Lyman's description of the site. He took us through the driveway system. I'm gonna ask if you could in a narrative fashion, address access to the site and site circulation and can, confirm the adequacy of the parking that's shown on the plans and the adequacy of the driveway design.
Sure. So so very quickly, um, as you heard Mr. Lyman say, there's uh, access is proposed via a full movement driveway to Oakerson Road. And a left and right turn in driveway and a right-out-only driveway to Howell Road. Our traffic study looked at the, the site driveways as well as the intersections of Route thirty-three in Oakerson and Route thirty-three in Howell Road. Um, very quickly, the site would generate ninety-four trips in the morning peak hour, a hundred and two in the evening peak hour, and seven hundred and forty on a typical weekday. Um, looking at the changes at the levels of service due to the project, none of the level of service grades change. And there are only modest increases in levels in delay of a second or less on any given approach. As far as the site driveways, they all operate at a level of service B or better during, for all approaches and movements for both time periods. Uh, and there's a total of two hundred and thirty-five physical parking spaces proposed. Where a hundred and seventy-seven are required, we're providing adequate parking to service the site.
The board may recall, Mr. Chairman, Board members, we, we had indicated at the earlier hearings that in order to be certain that we could accommodate shift-change parking demand, there is the additional whatever sixty parking stalls. And that's the purpose of having an excess reservoir on site. I have no further examination of Mr. Fishing, Mr. Fischinger. Um, the, the um, this, Mr. Kuchera indicated focus on the change- This Mr. Kuchera indicated focus on the changes and there are no other changes to the. Parking traffic.
Did the quantity of, did the quantity of park, did the quantity of parking spots for the workers change? With the rotation of the building?
We lost about twenty. Patrick, could you come in? We went from two fifty five to two thirty five, something like.
Yes, it was reduced.
Okay. But still compliant, correct?
Correct.
So does that mean that we lost some some pavement and we we've got some more. Purbius coverage out of that change?
Not a hundred percent sure. It probably was a net reduction in overall impervious coverage, yes.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
Mr. Fishinger is available to you for examination, Mr. Chair.
Does anybody from the board have any questions? Okay.
I did.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Drotto, go ahead.
How how many trips did you say? How many total trips?
So it's ninety four in the morning peak hour, a hundred and two in the evening peak hour and seven hundred and forty on a daily basis.
Is this one open seven days a week or five days a week?
It's a seven day a week upper. It has the potential, Mr. Drotto, being seven days a week.
Okay, so we don't, we don't have tenants yet. Okay.
No.
So so the trips are just what generated on a basis of how much square footage you have? How are we determining that many trips if we don't know the tenants?
Yeah, it's based on the I T E in that in this case, it was the tenth edition. Trip Generation Manual for its land use code one fifty five, one fifty, which is for warehousing. I did take a quick look at the eleventh edition. Estimates which have come out since the report was issued and the IT estimates actually go down. About four trips per hour.
Okay, so and then isn't there a weight restriction on Howell Road?
Yes, all we're intending that all of the. The truck traffic will use the. Either the Oakerson Road driveway or south on Howell Road to get to Route thirty three.
We had identified that, Mr. Drotto, on the record previously and agreed to abide by all of the posted weight limits.
Right, right, okay. That's that's all I had.
Mr. Page, let's let's crack the record there for a second. I don't think you have. A turn out of the site to go south on Howell Road to get to thirty three.
Mr. Lyman, would you bring up the plan so that the chairman can have it in front of him as we have to continue this discussion?
Is it that that right turnout? That's that's what I was trying to.
There's a right turnout. You're right, Paul. There's a right turnout that goes. Oh, you know what? There's a, there's a, there's a ramp. There's a ramp off of Howell Road onto thirty three, isn't there?
Right.
Yeah, there's a ramp to Howell, to Route thirty three westbound.
Forgot about that. I thought the only only option to get on and off was through Oakerson.
Could call Chief Kudrick having some specific guidance on that point for us.
Yeah.
We need the the plans brought up, Chairman.
You know what? I don't know if you have enough on your map. I'm looking at it myself here. I'd really love for everybody in the public, Mr. Drotto brought it up. It's a good, it's a good, it's a good point. I'd really like it to be on the record somehow to show that ramp going on to Route thirty three off Howell Road.
Nothing else clearly on the front page it's shown.
Yeah, fortunately you got a big old arrow.
Yeah.
Right over. Right over the.
With your cursor. With with your cursor, using A A one, Mr. Lyman, could you show us where that ramp is?
Yeah.
Can you bring, can you bring A one up?
That's fine.
Do you think we're good? And if you could. With your cursor and and a narrative, could you describe it, Patrick?
Yeah, sorry, I was on mute. So yeah, so this you could see the egress lane. Designated egress train in force to to make vehicles go south on Howell Road. And you can see it the on-ramp for Route thirty three bypass. Right immediately south of the of the southeast corner of Building B.
There's that adequate description for the record.
Sounds good to me, Mr. Drotto.
Yeah, no, I could I could see it here. I'm I'm looking at it, so yeah.
Thank you.
Before that goes away, I have a question. Is that sidewalk going down Howell Road? That I'm seeing?
Is that? Yes.
So. I'm just, this is just, I'm just wondering, what is, why do we need that sidewalk on Howell Road?
Well, Mr. Greensfield. We.
Part of our ordinance.
Township guidance.
Well, no, I I understand, but it's Howell Road, like we're not. Couldn't we just do a donation to a sidewalk to our sidewalk program?
Mr. Greens, we are willing to do that if so directed. Previously, we were asked to show that sidewalk, so we did. We're glad we turned it into dollars.
That's fine. I just. No, that's I'm just curious of of why we have it there, that's all. I know it's ordinance. But it just, it didn't make a whole lot of sense to me.
Yeah, Mr. Greenfield, as was testified to by Mr. Page, should the board. Look to grant that relief contribution would be required and move that installation.
Okay, be fine. You're 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 our town representation. And you'd have to maintain it after the fact, so why don't we ask? Why don't we, why don't we ask Ms. Newman what her. Her her opinion would be.
Given the character of the area and and maybe we would want to hear from the public. I mean, I would throw out two things. One, if there's going to be sidewalk, I'd like to see curb. But looking at this area, I'm not sure that that sidewalk serves a huge purpose as it's going right to the DOT ramp. There, I believe, so I would think in this instance, it may be more appropriate to waive that and get the contribution back to the township.
What about, what about the the sidewalk going towards thirty three business the other way? That to go to the curb to eventually connect it all the way to that so they can cross over to get to the Wawa and so forth.
Right, I mean, that one may be more appropriate if you wanted to just do it on that side. Definitely heading down towards the ramp. I'm not sure that it makes good sense along Howell Road going. I mean, Patrick, maybe you can pull your screen down. There's this. I mean, I just want to, that's all we're doing there. And I don't think it connects the sidewalk.
No.
So I'm just not sure that that piece gives us a lot of utility, Mr. Chairman.
Not today.
The applicant's position is as you do.
If you want, if want my opinion, I think that Mr. Greenfield has a point for the sidewalk that leads to the ramp. I don't see any point for that. I do see in the future maybe a point for the sidewalk going towards Business thirty three. Do we want to do a quick straw poll? Mr. Chair, I would recommend holding off on the straw poll until we hear from members of the public. Fair enough. Thank you for the recommendation.
I I just had one more quick question as I'm thinking as we're going over this traffic. And again, I know. I don't remember everything from the first application, so. If if you have eastbound freight going out, it's obviously going to go out Oakerson Road. Okay, what? Does Oakerson Road connect? Is there a light at the intersection for that? I'm not. Familiar with that. I'm just thinking of how a truck is going to go eastbound. Not that you'd have that many. But if it was going east on thirty three, what's the route that it's taken?
Then it would make the right turn out of the site on to Oakerson and a right turn on to thirty three.
Okay. Thirty three business, is there, is there a light there now currently or?
No, there isn't a traffic light at thirty three in Oakerson.
Okay.
It's a stop sign on Oakerson.
Okay. That might be a little difficult. I don't think you'll have too much freight going that way, but.
We're anticipating, we're anticipating the bulk of the.
Going out west.
Will go west to get to.
Thirty three.
Thirty three.
Right.
Interchange at Hall ultimately to the interchange at thirty three in Hall's Mill Road.
What what would be a quick estimate? You'd say ninety percent of your freight? Yeah, because that's a lot of, that's a lot of. You got a lot of trucks leaving there.
So we have, we're showing fifty percent of our total traffic would make the left out of our site on to Oakerson. And. We would anticipate the truck traffic to be even higher than that, that the majority. Seventy five to eighty percent of it would go out that way, but. Total traffic, including all of the employees, we're assuming half of them are going to make the left out of the site. From Oak, on the Oakerson to go towards thirty three in Hall's Mill Road.
Okay. Thank you.
Is it your statement, the majority of those movements are the employees in their cars?
Yes, the majority of the the traffic, especially on peak hour, is will be employees. In regular passenger vehicles.
Mr. Chair, we have one final witness when when you're ready.
Or have any other further comments? None. Mr. Page?
Thank you. Do a little movement of our cameras. Christine Cofone is with me in our offices, so. We're going to share this screen. This Christine Cofone is a professional planner. I know the board is familiar with her. We'll have her sworn and we'll present her credentials to you before she testifies.
You swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Certainly, it's Christine Nazaro, N A Z Z A R O, Cofone, C O F O N E. Business address is one twenty five Half Mile Road, Suite two hundred, Red Bank, New Jersey, zero seven seven zero one.
Ms. Cofone, if you take a few moments to share with all of us your professional credentials.
Yes, good evening, Chairman and members of the board. For the record, Christine Nazaro Cofone. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I have been practicing as a licensed planner for twenty seven years. I have been qualified as an expert witness here in Howell on numerous occasions. As well as in excess of four hundred and fifty other planning and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey. I've also been qualified in the Superior Courts as an expert witness, as well as found to be an expert witness at the Board of Public Utilities. The BPU, I teach planning and zoning courses for the Rutgers Center for Government Services. I also am an affordable housing special master in about two dozen municipalities. My licenses are current and valid and active and in good standing with the state.
Mr. Chair, would you accept Ms. Cofone's credentials?
We will accept their credentials.
Thank you.
The variance relief is is not a very large part of this application. I'm going to ask if you could in a narrative. Just describe the variance relief that the applicant is requesting, if you could take us through the proofs.
Sure, of course, I'd be happy to. So the use is proposed is conforming as well as. All the bulk setback and coverage requirements in the zone. So we are seeking, as Mr. Page indicated. I have a very small speaking part in tonight's presentation because this is a substantially conforming application. Additionally, it is also part of a settlement agreement. We have reached a settlement with regards to this application. And the reason we're here seeking some minor variance relief this evening is because. The sound attenuation wall is non-conforming with respect to its height as well as its location. Mr. Lyman pointed that out for you earlier this evening and you find that it's located on the eastern portion of our property. Statutorily, the board has two mechanisms to grant a use, to grant a bulk variance in New Jersey. You can grant it under the hardship criteria or of course, under the flexible C criteria. Or if the board finds that there is some benefit to be derived from the grant of the variance. Or it really results in a better zoning alternative for for the project. Then the board can certainly grant under the C two flexible C criteria. And that is absolutely where I think this this variance falls. This variance is certainly. Going to assist in not only, as Mr. Page indicated and Mr. Lyman indicated. Earlier with respect to deflecting the noise, but it is also going to provide a visual, a better visual barrier. To our adjacent neighbors. You heard Mr. Page question Mr. Lyman earlier this evening if there were going to be any holes in the wall. And Mr. Lyman responded affirmatively that there would not be. So that certainly. In my opinion, provides more than adequate foundational testimony. For the board to find that this variance can be properly granted under the C two flexible C statutory criteria. And it certainly does promote a desirable visual environment, which is criteria I of the land use law. So we certainly meet our statutory burden of proof. With respect to the negative criteria. The negative criteria does not ask you to hold other us or any other applicant to a standard that there be no detriment. Just that the benefits of the grant of the variance outweigh any detriment. And here, when you when you unpack that and look at the fact. That you are providing additional sound attenuation as well as additional screening. I think the board could certainly conclude that there's no substantial detriment to the zone plan or to the public good. So I think that we.
Just one second. Mr. Page. The sound, the sound, the sound wall was not in the original application, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
How did you come about putting this into the project? Is this something that you came out of the settlement agreement? What what's what's prompting this? Are you just doing this because you think it's a good idea to to be good and neighborly? What what's the? What's the criteria behind it?
The during the settlement discussions, the the use of the sound attenuation. We don't, your ordinances don't contemplate sound attenuation walls. And in fact. I can tell you, we've done dozens and dozens of these and.
What I'm getting at is 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 I agree with Ms. Cofone. It it seems like it's a positive to the project. I'm just wondering how it came about, that's all. And you said it was part. Okay, thank you.
We're in discussions and we realized that we have a couple of residential neighbors. The chair will recall that residential neighbors near us spoke about sound and it just seemed an issue that we could address.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. County House, it is, it is specifically called for in Exhibit B, the addendum to the settlement agreement. Specifically, it reads that a sound attenuation wall has been added to the concept plan to provide sound attenuation, additional visual visual screening. To the neighboring property. So that's that's exactly, it came out of those settlement discussions, which is not uncommon or atypical and that's. That's why we're here tonight at the Whispering Woods hearing. This is, if anyone was down at the league, there was a seminar in Whispering Woods down at the league. Yes, my husband was on the panel, so it was a very, very well-done seminar, but. But it's not unusual when you see these type of betterments, if you will, come out of. The result of settlement negotiations. So that is absolutely where the genesis of the sound wall came from.
Thank you.
So in addition to that, we are seeking a number of waivers, which Mr. Lyman was good enough to go over. And certainly, the test for waivers is that the waivers must be, unlike when we testify in variances and you hear. The planner justify them under the C-one or the C-two statutory criteria. The waiver is really the test is that a waiver is no more than the acknowledgement by the board that the condition of the property is satisfactory. And meets the requirement of the local ordinance, so that you're really meeting the spirit and intent of the ordinance. Ms. Newman, in her November eighteenth, twenty twenty-two report, identified a number of waivers that we are seeking. Some with regard to the ingress and egress drives. And as Mr. Pape also indicated, we've had extensive meetings with Chief Lewis and. We certainly have incorporated recommendations by by the chief into our access. And we believe that we are delivering to the board certainly a plan that will have safe and efficient access. One of the other areas that we're asking for a waiver from, which is a little bit a result of us flipping those buildings around. But one of the requirements in the ordinance is that there be screening between parking and the building. So we are not providing screening along the west side of Building A and the west side of Building B to the loading bay. And it's interesting because the way the ordinance reads that section of the ordinance. It certainly does make a difference between providing parking and for loading areas. It talks about providing. Landscaping in between the parking areas and the building. It doesn't specifically say in that area that it has to be between the loading area and the building. So I think we certainly are meeting the intent of that section of the ordinance in that. This will undoubtedly be a well landscaped site. And the orientation of the loading certainly has been really taken to a lesser, a lesser area of. To be viewed in conjunction with this application. So I think we're certainly meeting the the intent of the ordinance there. We also, as Mr. Lyman indicated, are seeking a a. Waiver for the light intensity that we're providing. And we are meeting the the illuminating engineer standards and providing for a little bit of additional lighting, if you will. But we certainly will not have any spillover onto adjoining properties or. Issues where we're causing any detriments associated with that lighting. We are additionally seeking, I know we spoke about the waiver for the sidewalks. It sounds to me like your professionals have some direction that that might not be the most. Efficient or well utilized sidewalk that is out there. I think you've heard a willingness on behalf of the applicant. That if it's ultimately decided that sidewalk isn't particularly useful or effective. We will certainly make a contribution to your sidewalk fund. So either way, whether we provide the sidewalk or in the alternative. If we contribute to your fund, in my opinion, we are meeting the intent of the ordinance. And similarly with the screening of the refuse area, the ordinance is very. Specific, if you will, with regard to the refuse area and the screening. So it's certainly not. That we are not providing screening of our refuse area. I believe Mr. Lyman walked you through. One of those screening criteria, one of the the actual structures, but that it would be same for all of our. Refugees areas on the site, and he certainly showed you that we are providing. Around those, around those enclosures. So it's not as if they won't be screened. It's just that we don't have the the screening specifically. On the four sides that's being, that's requested per the letter of the ordinance. So with, oh, the last waiver that Mr. Lyman also talked about was the the depressions for the curbing. Where we didn't have those depressions, where we were not providing parking or we're not providing handicap parking. There certainly isn't the need to provide the the depressions. So. They would be provided for no actual benefit or no reason, and I certainly think that that's not the intent of the Howell ordinance. So when you want, when you roll all that back and and you look at the the reasons and the justifications, I think the board can certainly conclude. That we meet the waiver test, which is that we meet the intent of the ordinance in each case. We have worked quite diligently, our team with your professionals, to deliver to the board a plan. That we felt, you know, meets the spirit and intent of the ordinance and satisfies the comments that we see received from your professionals. So I can certainly say that in my professional opinion, that we meet our standard of proof with respect to. The limited variance relief as well as the waivers.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I have no further examination of Ms. Cofone and she. For your examination.
Thank you. Does any of our professionals or anybody on the board have any questions or comments? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Pape. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's, thank you. That concludes your applicant's presentation. This evening. Subject to. The public. Portion. We would ask before that we conclude that I have an opportunity to briefly sum. Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Nobody else has any questions? I guess we'll open it to the public. Eileen, you wanna please describe how people can raise their hand and mute, unmute, so forth, and we'll bring people in one at a time.
At this point, the chairman has opened the hearing up for members of the public. You need to use the raise your hand feature. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise or lower your hand, star six to mute or unmute yourself. You will need audio and video capability. You will be sworn in, required to give your name and address.
Thank you. Got a couple people with their hands raised.
Yeah, I'm trying to bring the first person in. It's, they're listed as AJC. You have your video on?
I don't know yet. I'm trying to get some help here.
Start video. Wait, wait, let go, sir. Yes.
Here I am.
Okay, sir, just before you get started, I need to swear you in. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state and spell your name and give us your address.
My name is Albert J. Sostero, C-E-S-T-E-R-O, Junior. And I live on three Howell Road.
Okay, so sir, you can ask any of the witnesses any questions and you can make any statements you please.
Well, first off, I want to direct one question to to, I guess, Mr. Pape. On the first denial, there was a question of anomalies by the graveyard. Has that been addressed?
It was.
I can't hear you, sir. I can't hear Mr. Pape.
He's, he's working on it.
I got it.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah, yes, we can.
Yes.
You can?
Thank you, yes.
Dr. Raymond Walker presented the the testimony on that extensively. There was considerable testing done. There there were voids and anomalies that were identified and. All of that was part of the the record.
You know what that anomaly was? Because I didn't see any in the record.
It's all. I I do not know what the anomalies were.
Okay, because there was some speculation that it might have been.
We 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 need to let Mr. Pape finish answering the question before we go on to the next one.
I couldn't hear.
Doctor, Doctor Raymond Walker is, was the person who testified. He is with us this evening. If anyone wants to rehear the statements that he made about the testing that was done. But we had, we testified extensively to, until the board and the board's professionals were satisfied.
Was that at the meeting last October?
You, hold on, I just want to say, you 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 provided. Testimony. I would not speak for whether the board's professionals were or were not satisfied. But I think the the simple answer to the question is. If if I'm correct. The nature of it being an anomaly is. It's, it's not defined clearly.
Correct. I agree. My second issue is the contaminated soil. Has that been remediated? And I'd like to get on the record that our soil has been monitored by the EPA from the gas station. On on Route thirty-three that had a plume coming in our direction. But our well is about a little bit less than a hundred feet deep. And it it tested okay for their problems, but it came up. With an unsafe level of nitrates, which is usually attributed to farmland from the fertilizers that they've used for. For generations. So I didn't, there was, I'm just going by what they denied, what the board went when they denied it last time, last year in October. And they said that there is soil contamination. So has that issue been been remediated?
We have not remediated. Our client has not completed the purchase of the property and would do so, as indicated on the record. It was the 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 testimony was that both Phase one and Phase two studies had been performed. And that there was arsenic and gildrin in the soils.
Right.
That there was a discussion on the record that we would have a. We would pursue an REO under the guidance of a licensed site remediation professional.
But that hasn't been done yet?
No.
Okay, thank you.
The anomalies were.
Um, my third issue is the traffic studies. I don't have an engineering degree. But I can tell you that I consider myself an expert because I've lived here for almost forty years at this same location. And I want to just show you, if I can quickly, if you can see that. That's my driveway yesterday morning. That's an eighteen-wheeler stopped in traffic. It stopped in traffic, semi-blocking my driveway. And that's on Howell Road, which is a four-ton limit. That's routine. There's probably forty trucks at least a day that travel northbound and southbound on Howell Road. Completely disregarding the signage. I had a confidential person in Howell PD that told me that there has not been any summonses issued. As far back as they looked, and I've never seen in forty years any eighteen-wheeler being ticketed on Howell Road for being overweight. So my concern is the, I I noticed the plan and and I I gotta commend you guys. The plan looks. Wonderful the way you presented it. You made some improvements, which which are, you know. Nice to see, but I I noticed that in a traffic study that I looked at. I didn't see any mention of eighteen-wheeler's of overweight vehicles on either Howell Road or Five Points Road. And the the way I've seen it on a daily basis is tractor trailers come off of. Route eighteen, they take a right on Howell on Five Points Road. They cross the intersection and they go to the warehouses, the new warehouses that are built on. On Vanderveer Road, Fairfield Road. And traffic coming from south of there, from Route five twenty-four. They turn left and go north on Howell Road routinely, daily, and there's a lot of them. So I did notice on your plan that it doesn't look like your ingress and egress on Howell Road would be capable of. Of handling an eighteen-wheeler. So that would leave just the one for Oakerson Road. But my point is, there's a massive amount of tractor trailers. Existing today on these roads that are that are not designed to carry them. And I made a comparison last year about comparing this massive project to. Port Authority, New York City's Port Authority, and Mr. Pape corrected me, telling me that. They weren't building a bus depot, even though they're going to be open twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Three hundred sixty-five days a year, nonstop. And I I commented back, that is correct, Mr. Pape. A commuter bus averages forty feet, and over-the-road tractor trailer averages seventy feet. With those carrying larger trailers are fifty-three feet, meaning the trailer's fifty-three feet. So those approach eighty feet and and over. And you have your entrance and egress for your tractor trailers, which your testimony said. Would be probably seven hundred trips or whatever. Daily, that and and that's right across the street from Howell North Little League Field, Little League ball complexes. And being an evident, and and a resident of this area for so long. I can tell you that there are children from the developments off of Five Points Road. They ride their bicycle to the swim club. And they ride their bicycles to. The Howell North Little League Baseball Complex. And I I also want to go on record as saying that I did this before, but we're not opposed to progress. I'm in this house for forty years. I'm a Howell business owner for forty-five years. I've seen vast changes in the town, and most of them are very positive. I view this one as not a positive for the Jerseyville section of Howell. It's a small, quaint section that's lived with each other with light industry, farming, residences and businesses for two hundred-plus years. And I know the Foreman family personally. I believe they should have every right to make the most money out of their parcel of land that they've had for so many generations. But my point is, in the past, we have lived together harmoniously. We've, I'm not complaining about the tractor-trailer traffic on Howell, on Howell Road. It's four tons. They break the law. But I work around it. My family works around it. But I don't believe that this sec, this this beautiful project that you're proposing, which is absolutely stunning. Is the right fit for the Jerseyville section of Howell. I think it's more, it's better fitted to Dayton, you know, further out on Route thirty-three in Millstone, where where one identical to this. Was just approved by Millstone, and they just approved two more, and we have a couple of more on Fairfield Road. And we just built one on on Vanderveer Road. And on Howell Road, where where the other projects that have been warehouses and flex units, they're empty. They're empty. There is Mickey Truck Bodies that does a thriving business there. That's at the at the. Western end of Oakerson Road. And there's a couple of them that have been built a few years back. And they're just, they're, they have signs out for, you know, rent. They can't get tenants. So my concern is this particular project, I equate it to New York City's Port Authority. The new New York City's Port Authority that's scheduled to be built. It has one hundred and sixty. Bus loading docks, bus gates. It's going to be five stories high, and I also take issue with this being described as a one-story warehouse. Where I come from, forty-five feet is four and a half stories. And I realize that this is the maximum that Howell Township allowed previously. And I do understand that that this use has been non-permitted recently, but that you guys got in before that, and I understand that, grandfather. I'm in an auto body shop forty-five years. I was grandfathered in years ago. So I'm I'm all for progress. I'm all for Howell Township. I love Howell Township. It's my home. I hope to die here, not not soon, but someday. And I just can't see this project fitting in with the Jerseyville section of Howell. We have a nice church with a steeple across the street. I was driving home from my shop yesterday, which is in Howell Mini Park across from my mom's fire academy. And for a minute there, where we come up to the the old Grange, where there used to be two our cycle shop, now it's a swimming pool place. You could picture yourself in Maine or or New England somewhere. It's it's. Was done, was done very nicely and considered with all the neighbors. The Sacred's Industrial Park on the left-hand side, the other industrial park on the right-hand side, even the Wawa. They've been done in 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 a way that fits into the community and is appreciated by the community. But I can't see this benefiting anyone in in the Jerseyville section of Howell, especially Howell Township. We have G's Giant Warehouses, and I believe the the firm, Mr. Pape's firm, has been in on on most of them. And and that's fine. I, you know, he has a thriving business. But this is, to me, this is shoehorning something that's way, way, way too big for this particular twenty-nine acre parcel. So. I I think that's about my my concern. I have the concerns about the anomalies. I have concerns about the tainted soil because we're a victim of it with high nitrates. And and also the the adding more tractor-trailer traffic. This is not going to be a pass-through anymore. It's gonna be a destination. And and although your project, it looks like a beautiful design, everybody worked hard. And although your project, it looks like a beautiful design, everybody worked hard on it, it's just to me and to a lot of other people in the area who unfortunately aren't here on the Zoom meeting because it was done two days before Thanksgiving and also at the same time where there's been another meeting in Howell Township Government. So I question the timing of the meeting, but I also take issue with the height of the building being described as one story. The Washington Monument's 555 feet. And if Mr. Pape was running the show, it would be one story. So I hope you take into heart my concerns and other residents of this particular area and take into concern the quaintness of this particular area of the Jerseyville section. Thank you.
On behalf of the applicant, some of those, the enforcement by the municipality on the vehicles traveling on Howell Road violating the truck weight limit is not something that can be laid at our feet. We've indicated that we are aware of the weight restrictions and will abide by it. We could work with your police department to come up with appropriate signage on our site that alerts trucks, drivers to the weight limits that are on the adjacent roadways. But we acknowledge the weight limit and we acknowledge that we would, our circulation is designed to avoid infractions. With regard to the intensity of the use, your ordinances contain a number of methods of controlling intensity. These include setbacks, impervious coverage limitations.
I'm familiar with that.
We have not, we have not violated any of those. In fact, the impervious coverage of the site is at 64.6%, where 70% is requested. So it's not shoehorned and in fact, we left, we left part of that percentage to not use. As far as the use of the building, the zone is SED. This property is zoned for that which we are showing to you. That your, the town's master plan contemplated that this would be warehouses would be built and your zoning ordinance identifies them. But those are the responses to the applicant. I choose not to respond to any of the personal comments that were made to me, other than to say that it's been a long time since somebody's made a personal comment to me during the public hearing.
I didn't hear that last part, sir.
You made a personal comment.
I don't recall making a personal comment.
Mr. Chair, we're not, Mr. Chairman, we're not.
That's not productive.
It's not relevant as to.
Yeah, I understand. And I understand also that it's not Mr. Pape's or the applicant's fault about the traffic on Howell Road, but I am citing a reality. And I am citing that this area is, has.
Sir, we took your testimony. What I was saying is, the debate as to whether there was a personal comment that was made or not is not something the board is going to consider or adjudicate between the two of you.
I'm a former D1 athlete in college, I don't, that doesn't bother me at all. I don't, I don't take anything personal at all. I appreciate Mr. Pape's response and I take no issue with him. And I, once again, I commend, the project looks great, but not for this area. And, you know, my add, pointing it in was putting it, it's not going to blend in with the area, it's going to overtake the area, not just physically, but business-wise, it's going to increase tractor-trailer traffic because that's what it's designed to do. It's designed to be a tractor-trailer transportation hub. It's so much so that when the applicant first wrote the letter that I saw for one of the applications, they made a point of saying it's not going to be a fulfillment center, which tells me that it's going to be as big as a fulfillment center, big enough so that the person that is applying for the use and the approvals has to differentiate that it's not going to be a fulfillment center. So we don't know that, we're just taking their word for it. But my whole point, the crux of my argument, is that this area is, there's plenty more areas to build that are way better suited for this particular project, which I think is massive. And I still, I still take into account, I think my valid to half the size of New York City's Port Authority is pretty valid. Everyone knows when they get out of the Lincoln Tunnel, what do they smell? They smell diesels, they smell buses. When buses unload and unload, they shut down. Most of the time when tractor-trailers are loading and unloading, they don't shut down. They remain running, especially refrigerated boxes. They stay running, so that's my concern. I don't, I don't know if my, did you want to add to this at all?
Yeah.
Okay, this is my wife Jacqueline. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies, I appreciate your time.
Jacqueline, we'll have to get you sworn in.
Ma'am, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state and spell your name for the record and give us your address.
Jacqueline Sesterro, J-A-C-Q-U-E-L-I-N-E, the last name C-E-S-T-E-R-O, 3 Howell Road, Freehold, New Jersey, 07728.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, I take a little bit of a different view than my husband. I agree with everything he has to say because, as he said, he's been here 40 years, so have I. I guess I want to address the issue of tractor-trailers on Oakerson Road. Although you're saying that they're not allowed because it's a four-ton road on Howell Road, see it all the time. But my main concern is the swim clubs on one side and the Howell ball fields are on the other side. We, in the summer especially, see children all the time, probably from the age 10 and up, making trips to the Wawa. It's the only place around that they have to grab something to eat unless they're going to eat at the swim club or at the ball field. But they're on their own, they're on their bikes, you know, anywhere up to 17, back and forth all the time. That and the fact that no one's taking into account the bus stops on Five Points Road, there's not many bus stops on, school bus stops, there's not many school bus stops on this end of Howell Road, but the south end, there are plenty. And also on Five Points Road, they're waiting right on the road, basically. They're out in the dark in the morning. It's, you know, I mean, I hate to see a tragedy happen because of the amount of tractor-trailer trucks. There might be more cars coming in because of employees, but I would bet that the tractor-trailers are going to overtake it, either on Oakerson or Howell. And if they do attempt to drive on Howell Road, where are they going to be turning around if they can't make it into Howell, into the egress into the warehouse on Howell Road? So that's one of my concerns. I wrote some stuff down, so I have to just look at it real quick. Oakerson Roads, especially with the Howell ball fields, there's no sidewalk there, the parking is extremely close to the road. We have to be careful driving past that ball field because kids dart in and out of all those cars. They park on the grass less than a foot or two feet away from the edge of the road.
When they have tournaments.
Because, yeah, when they have tournaments, it's very busy, there's not enough parking there. I also want to clarify the wall height. I know, Mr. Pape, you said it was going to be 12 feet, I believe, or 15 feet?
15 feet, yes. And I didn't say it, it was Mr. Linum.
Okay, in the, in the legal notice I received, let me find it.
28 feet.
It says a sound attenuation wall has been added to the revised plan with the height of up to 28 feet. What does that mean?
We put in, we put in language up to 28 feet while we were waiting the final review from our sound consultant, the sound consultant's report came in and it's, up to 28 feet includes 15, tonight we confirmed it's only 15.
Okay, so it's only 15 on top of the berm or no, or no berm? That's what I'm trying to kind of get a picture of, just exactly how high and what it's going to look like.
Mr. Linum, if you could address the location of the wall, the berm and the retaining.
Yeah, so I'm referring to a one in a site plan set. I'm going to the grading in drainage plan sheet seven. I'm going to zoom in. The height is 15 feet above the berm height. So we are maintaining a berm, we were proposing a berm last time during the prior application, so we're still maintaining that berm. So this, the 15-foot would be on top of the berm height, which is five feet. So that'll be effective 20 feet high from the grade. It varies, but you know, at the highest, at the lowest point, the highest, it's about seven, so 22 feet towards the north and it goes as low as 20 feet, roughly at the highest of the berm. And that's, that's looking relative to the eastern proper line along a common line with your lot.
Yeah, that's my backyard, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, right there.
If they can make the wall higher, please do. I mean, it's already taking away. My husband said, don't say it, but 40 years living here, beautiful sunset, every single night, it's taking that away. So other than that, if they could build a higher wall, that would help. We're going to be locked in here anyway. As far as landscaping on that wall, is the landscaping that you show in the other picture in front of the wall, on the west side of the wall or the east side of the wall? Yes, that.
Yes, it's on the downslope of the berm, so it's on the east side of the wall.
Okay, so that would be our side of the wall.
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right, let me just look real quick, I had some notes, it'll take me one second. What about lighting? We already have a problem with lighting across Route 33, the lights from the gas station, I mean, and across Howell Road in the industrial park. Right now, there's a light, it just shines, you get out of your car in my driveway, it's right in your eyes. We're actually going to go over there and ask them to do something about it. We already asked the gas station and they did lower it, lower the light as far as the downplay of it. I don't know what you call that, not an engineer, the projection of light. Go ahead.
Patrick, I'm going to ask you a couple of questions. You could just go through the calvins that are associated with the light, the type of, the coloring of the light, the height of the fixture. Please confirm the type of fixture that's used and the assurances that we can give that there won't be spillage.
Okay, so this is the lighting plan and you can see there's a few parking lot lights that are along the parking lot to light up the parking lot for Building B. They are directed inward and they are directed down, they are LED fixtures. They are designed to avoid any spillage. Actually, you can see that goes up to the 50-foot buffer line. So with the wall and the landscaping, it's going to block the lights along this portion of the parking lot.
Are the light poles?
How tall?
Yes.
They are 24 feet.
So make the wall at least 24 feet. Please. Like we said, we already, we've already lost our view of the stars and I understand where we are, what we're zoned for. But we've been here 40 years and it was very quaint when we moved here. We are inundated with lighting, traffic, tractor-trailer traffic that shakes the house on a daily basis. When you, when somebody, when the traffic engineer said 740 daily, is he talking about cars or tractor-trailers? They did a study 94 a.m., 102 p.m. and 740 daily. Mr. Fisher.
Mr. Fisher, would you just confirm that that's the cars and the truck movements?
Yeah, the 740 numbers, total vehicles in and out, so that is, that is cars and trucks combined.
On a daily basis, is everyone familiar with Howell Road?
Well, and keep in mind, that is 740 associated with the entire site, not all of them will be using Howell Road.
Well, that's, that's, it's crazy, only because of the amount of traffic that's on Howell Road now. Howell Road is so narrow, you mentioned before about sidewalks, I don't know where you're going to even put a sidewalk to go to Wawa, there's just, there's no room. My house is 15 feet from the road, they've already widened that a couple of years ago. But 740 daily, including tractor-trailers. My house is going to fall apart. It's built in 1863. I don't know, I'm not trying to make light of this and I'm sorry if I'm keeping the board members late this evening, but this is a very important issue with us.
Jacqueline, don't apologize, this is your time to speak.
Keep the sidewalk, but it's not going to be able to go past 5 Howell Road. I don't, I don't know how, where you're going to fit it.
Well, the board would love to hear the input from the public. If you don't think the sidewalk is a good idea, they.
I think it's a great idea for the children that are, that are going to Wawa.
I know.
And there are a lot. What? My husband wants to.
Hi, let me just join here for a minute. I can add a little bit, a little bit here. The, when the DOT, when New Jersey DOT reconfigured the intersection and rerouted Oakerson Road and they lowered the grade of Howell Road and improved it, put curbing up, storm drain in front of our home and curbing down from the corner all the way to past number five Howell Road, they stopped at the Foreman tract. But if you do have a sidewalk on your, on your plan, you should probably leave it there because when New Jersey DOT put the improvements and they put the start of a sidewalk and they put crosswalks across Route 33, crossing Howell Road and also crossing Route 33 and crossing Five Points Road, so there's a crosswalk there with a, you know, with a walking person, you know, when the countdown, yeah, because there is foot traffic. It doesn't sound like there would be, but there is because there's residences, there's a good amount of residences, actually Peter Foreman Drive, it's a housing development where there's kids. And also on the other side, Lyons Court, there's a bunch of them and in the summertime, you wouldn't think it, but there are, there's a lot of foot traffic, walking to and from the swim club and walking and riding bicycles to and from the baseball fields. So my, as a resident of the area, I think you're better off leaving the sidewalk if you're going to go through with this, if the board approves it, you put the sidewalk in and then maybe later on the line or maybe it would be extended past our property, which has fairly narrow frontage and number five, which has more frontage than we do, so that it would connect to the already existing cuts in the curbing that New Jersey DOT has foreseen. Because let's face it, this area is, is growing and before you know it, it's going to be like the areas that people who moved to Howell, from the areas because they left because it was too dense and too overpopulating, too much traffic, so they moved to Howell Township and now they're getting the same thing that they left from.
Okay, so I guess my next.
Which line term? What are you talking about?
Maybe final issue would be the trucks turning out of Oakerson Road heading to 33 because they're going to go on 33 to Five Points Road to Route 18. I mean.
Well, they're not going to, they're not going to be able.
They're not supposed to because it's for a four-ton weight limit, but when you come off of Route 18, you're going to be taken to get to Howell, you take Five Points Road to Howell Road. It's the first thing they're going to want to do. There's going to be way too much truck traffic, it's so dangerous. That intersection at Oakerson and 33 is dangerous, there's a blind turn there when you're turning left onto Oak. There's a blind turn there. When you're turning left onto Oakerson Road, when you're heading west, it's very difficult to maneuver that sometimes. It's wide, it's plenty wide, but um, it's a difficult turn. There's a, there's a specified turning lane, but it's a dangerous, it's dangerous turn. So I guess the other thing, I guess, is um, all the tra, tra, truck, tractor trailer traffic that's going to be gone past the ball fields. I don't think you're going to avoid them traveling on Howell Road. I don't think that's gonna be avoidable, even though it's a four-ton road, which nobody's mentioned, nobody's even brought that up. I think that's, I think that's about it. I'm just um, pleading that you make the right decision in putting this, these two warehouses in a much better suited location. Uh, the property, it's jammed on that twenty-nine acres, looks like it's jammed anyway, according to the plans. It's massive. Besides that, the lighting, which we've addressed, the fumes, which are going to be horrendous. I, I'm thankful that you've turned the warehouse B around. I'm very happy about that. The consideration is appreciated. As far as the Foreman family, I, I give them credit as wanting to make the most of their property. They've been here a long, long time. They deserve to do with their property something that's gonna benefit their future generation. But this, this project is, is just not the fit for here. That, that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for your time tonight also.
Thank you. Eileen? Next person from the public, please.
Hey, Miss Oakerson, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Uh, please state and spell your name and give us your address.
Sure, Jennifer Oakerson, J E N N I F E R, Oakerson, O K E R S O N, four-five-five Oakerson Road.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight and am most grateful for your willingness to listen. I have lived in North Howell my entire life. It is a lovely area with charm, open fields, well-spaced houses, and a generous ratio of open land to developed areas. At one time, it was important to the leaders of Howell that we preserve the open space. Now I am disappointed that the leadership's focus has inexplicably shifted and our community is being inundated with three large warehouses, all within two miles of each other. Other townships have done this and many of the population have moved away or lament the consequences of the decision. I seriously encourage this board to remain true to the vision for a rural Howell and maintain its original, original decision to deny the proposed warehouse on Oakerson Road. This is a very large warehouse with many bays and ample rental space at the other end of Oakerson Road. There is another warehouse, obviously a half a mile away, and neither one have a tenant. I'm absolutely confused as to why we need to build an additional one when no one's moving into the one that's being worked on. Additionally, this proposed warehouse has many more bays, parking spaces than required. Considering the current emphasis on going green and preserving natural settings, scaling back seems like a prudent decision, one that might help keep our setting attractive and inviting. In addition, traffic will increase on Oakerson Road, which is already busy with speeding cars, disregarding safety laws. Um, they're talking about the tractor trailers on Howell Road. All you have to do is go down Oakerson around four o'clock and you'll see the drag race down the road. Before moving forward with this harmful plan, the town should consider doing their own traffic pattern study. Finally, what is the consideration for the septic and the sewer in that area? There is no sewer in that area. Other than our houses, the largest property on that road is the North Howell Little League Ball Field. It definitely needs to be considered. The field is used by kids and families year-round, especially during the spring and fall season. If you go there during the spring and fall season, you'll see cars lined on both sides of Oakerson Road, continuing well past the fields in either direction. Kids change into their uniforms and play on the grassy area which touches the road. What would adding a stream of tractor trailers do except take away um, the natural setting of the field and make for hazardous conditions for the children? The kids are excited to play baseball and not conscious of new traffic, which to repeat would be hazardous to their safety. Additionally, some children, my autistic son mainly, must cross the road in order to get to the field. We are the ones that she's talking about with the bikes. Um, you know, we don't bike down Howell Road, we bike down Oakerson Road, which is where you're saying most of the tractor trailers are going to be. You know, he's very good, but not, you know, who knows when he will make a, a start decision and, and end up where he shouldn't be. Oakerson Road is not made for that kind of traffic. It was made for the kids to have fun and safely play without having to worry about breathing in more pollutants and unnatural variables of light and truck noises that would most likely become accessory overload. In addition, the people before us mentioned the bus stops on Howell Road. I can tell you that my kids are out on Oakerson Road in the dark, waiting for their bus. I am aware that landowners can develop their property, however, in this case, I urge you to consider the spirit of the, what the vision was for North Howell. I understand that it is SED now, however, when my in-laws were moved there, there was no SED, there was a house, that was it. Um, this building was grandfathered into pre-existing condition using codes that are now illegal, but the planning boards seek to preserve the character of North Howell and put the best interest of all its citizens ahead of the riches and commercialism of a few. I encourage you also, even if there might be a lawsuit if you deny this, to go and win the lawsuit for the township of Howell. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oakerson. Okay, Eileen? Next person, please.
We have Shannon Ryan.
Hi, I'm here.
Okay, can you um, turn on your camera, Mr. Ryan?
There you go. You have to unmute yourself. You're muted, ma'am. There you go.
Okay, hi.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, there you go. Do you swear or affirm testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please state and spell your name and give us your address.
My name is Shannon Ryan, S H A N N O N. My last name is Ryan, R Y A N. I live at thirty-one Concord Circle in Howell.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, um, I live on the other side of Howell. I'm on the southwestern uh, corner of, of Howell. I too have been here uh, going on thirty-nine years and we've seen such a big change to our uh, our, the buildings, uh, the amount of building, the amount of vacancies that are up and down Route nine. Uh, we see the warehouses going up and not really, uh, you know, being filled. And I, I, I just want people to know that we're all concerned about um, all the building that's going on in Howell, and this, this particular warehouse is just gigantic. And the enormity, I think, is what is scaring most people. When we see so many warehouses that are vacant, and we also see people that are not going into work and we see the number of, you know, that are working from home and that this, this particular site has so many office spaces. Um, I don't understand why the enormity of this particular project. And I really wish that the township and uh, the council would really reconsider uh, approving this project, and please don't approve the project, or rezone that, or resize the project where it doesn't change the, you know, the, the, the site of uh, of Howell. Because we are a, a, a community that likes to keep its greenery. So I don't really have money at, on an area that I live in, but I, I've just seen over the last thirty-eight years so much greenery uh, destroyed by overbuilding and then seeing so many vacancies in those same buildings. We're gonna see the same thing in the other project that's going on, on the other side of Howell, uh, the other south-eastern end of Howell.
Ma'am, we're not permitted to talk about other applications that require public notice.
I'm sorry, but I'm just concerned about the, the overbuilding and the size of this particular project and how much traffic. I mean, seven hundred and forty uh, traffic in a typical uh, day or weekday is a lot. Um, so again, I'm just here to uh, voice my concern for the size of the building and uh, for the traffic and for uh, changing the face of Howell. And that's it. I appreciate um, you know, having the time to speak and I appreciate the council, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Eileen? Next person, please.
Next, we have Alyssa.
Hey, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please state and spell your name and give us your address.
Uh, Joshua Cool, J O S H U A, K E U L, uh, seventeen Saint John's Drive, Freehold zero-seven-seven-two-eight.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Yes. Um, I would like to let the board know kind of of some personal experience that I have within the transportation industry. I work for a transportation co, company and have uh, regular interactions with drivers. And based on the space, the availability, and going to a facility and making deliveries, uh, there are time. Early uh, within this area, that there's gonna be a lot of drivers parking there. Can't, in most cases, it's unreliable for drivers to follow um, kind of cool ordinances and procedures when they're coming from across the country in different areas. Uh, we come from all across the country. And I think for uh, ability of traffic, I just wanna, you're not gonna control the drivers, you could have uh, a whole assess in place for receiving, but still uh, facility uh, on when drivers need a better understanding of where the plan is to overflow of traffic. So just within my experience, I'd wanna make sure that's called out, because you're not gonna control the, where the driver's gonna go and when they're in fifty-foot uh, rigs, those can be anywhere uh, across our town, which I think will become a huge issue. So, thank you. That was the only point.
Hey, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Can I say something too?
Yep.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name and give us your address.
Alyssa Cool, A L Y S S A K E U L, seventeen Saint John's Drive.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cool. Please proceed.
So our development where we live is um, right off of Vandevere, so we do see already a lot of trucks on Br, Vandevere. And our development connects to um, Howell Road on the other side. The kids can ride their bikes through a sidewalk and get out on the other side of road, on the road. And there's kids all over the place here. And as a, as a young mom, we wanna live here forever. And seeing something like this goes up really gives me caution that I don't know if I wanna be able to raise my kids here, because I want my kids, like they've been said, to go to that swim club. We've talked about joining that swim club, right? If something like this goes up, I don't feel safe letting my kid go on a bike and ride to the swim club. And so I don't have any sort of other expertise besides being a parent and seeing what I'm seeing. This is not safe for our children. These roads cannot accommodate those sized trailers, like they are narrow, right? So I don't really have much to say besides that, besides really asking the board to think about the people that are living here and using these roads and our family and all the great things that Howell has to offer and how a building like this and the traffic that it can create won't allow us to enjoy all of the things that Howell has to offer. So that's all I really have to say. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you. Uh, can we take a five-minute break? It's been about almost an hour, almost hour, almost two hours close. Seven, seven to nine, my math is off, sorry. It's been two hours. Can we just take a five-minute break, please?
Yes, the board will now take a five-minute recess. The planning board will now reconvene. We have Anazet Ray.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, my name is Anazet Ray, A N A Z E T T E, last name is Ray, um, R A Y. I live at one-thirty Lyons Court. Um, I'm just gonna briefly piggyback on.
Mister Chair, you sworn in?
No, you have.
Okay. She was done. Uh, you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Um, I'm just gonna briefly piggyback on to the prior comments um, about the traffic on Five Points Road and the schooling. The applicant seems to imply that um, he, they, they do understand that there are traffic regulations along Howell Road and Five Points Road, but there's nothing that they could do about it except um, trust that people would abide by those traffic rules and regulations, but we already know that that's not happening. And I, as far as the traffic study is concerned, I don't think there's been enough done in the traffic study to address what they've already admitted is an inevitable re, result of trucks using those roads. Um, they haven't evaluated what sidewalks can be put where on Five Points and Howell Road to accommodate children waiting at the bus stop in the morning for school. I can tell you right now that there are um, there's a bus stop on the corner of Toby Court and Five Points Road. There is a bus stop on Five Points Road between both sides of Lyons Court. Um, on that area is particularly dangerous because uh, water settles on one side of the road and in winter conditions, it freezes and does have a tendency to cause accidents with cars speeding down that road. There, to the best of my knowledge, there's also a bus stop on Five Points and Buena Vista. They're told in waiting out there in the winter months in the dark. There's been nothing done to basically determine what accommodations can be effectuated to address those conditions. And given the fact that this application would require the granting of multiple variances, at this point, I think it's premature to grant the application without sufficient studies as to those impacts. Um, I don't understand why money's being dedicated into a general Howell sidewalk fund when there's been no studies what sidewalks the applicant could actually put in along Howell and Five Points Road to address these conditions. And that's basically it.
Thank you. Mister Chair.
Yes.
Do, do you think that uh, would it be you or one of our professionals that would explain how our sidewalk ordinance works? What is, what is the um, responsibility of the applicant? And the sidewalk fund and the whole nine yards, what, what, what is that all about?
Essentially, we have it, we have an ordinance, it requires one of two things. It requires that sidewalk be put in, or it requires that in the, in lieu of financial contribution be made and that the town can use it to place sidewalks in areas that they're seeking to actively uh, create a pedestrian infrastructure. Uh, it's the board's role, it's the board's exclusive jurisdiction to determine which of those two it wants.
Okay, now.
Understood, but there's been.
Miss Ray, one more, I'll, I'll, give me one second, I'm leading my professionals to try to answer your question. The, the, the sidewalk fund, do, do we, does the board have any uh, say in what to do with that, or is that?
No, that's the uh.
Council and, and it's.
The, the governing body determines where and how that's gonna be spent.
And Mister Chairman, just so we're clear, the plans currently show sidewalk along their frontage of Oakerson and their frontage of Howell Road. The only currently doesn't show it is on um, Michael Curtin Way. Uh, and I'm assuming if the board wanted, and that was where they had said they would agree to a payment in lieu. We heard some comments from Mister Greenfield, our public works, on sidewalk on Howell Road. I don't think the board has yet to make that decision, but just so we're clear, the plans do show. I don't think the board has yet to make that decision, but just so we're clear, the plans do show the compliant sidewalk with the exception of Michael Curtin Way.
Right, and where I'm getting at is I'm hearing concerns about sidewalks needing needed outside of the purview of this applicant's property line. And I believe the proper way to, to instruct the public would be that's something they got to bring to the council.
Well, it's, I, I, I just want to make it more clear that the law doesn't permit this board to require sidewalk in those areas. But those are areas that the town could use the sidewalk trust fund if it's so desired to place sidewalk.
Correct.
A whole, a full study has been done to determine whether that those sidewalks are needed, given the impact of this specific development. So there's nothing really to go before the town council at this moment with regards to that issue.
I think your, your concerns is probably more than enough for them to, to, to start answering questions. But thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Next, I have Charles Oakerson.
Mr. Coachero, let me ask you a question, since we don't have any, any representation from the council. I can't remember what the class number is.
Class three.
Great. You know, i- i- if we have, we have people from the public that have, have comments like that. Is there, is there a memo or something that we can instruct Eileen to provide some email or something to the council? So that they would have what came up during these meetings, be able to bring that information back to them?
But I would, I mean, if the board is desirous, you know, it's, it is encapsulated in all the resolutions that we adopt, what members of the public have said. So I would just send the resolution to them so that they could read the discourse.
Okay, thank you for that insight. Okay, who do we have up next?
Charles Oakerson.
Hey, Mr. Oakerson, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Excuse me. Um, can you please state and spell your name and give us your address?
My name is Charles Oakerson, C H A R L E S, O K E R S O N, four, five, nine, Oakerson Road, Freehold, New Jersey, oh, seven, seven, two, eight.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Oakerson.
Well, I would like to add my concerns with the traffic for one thing. I mean, that, that ball field is there. You're talking about how much traffic this thing would generate when you have no idea who's going to rent it. So I don't understand how these numbers can hold up. Um, you're heading out of some road to a stop sign, not a traffic light. I mean, to me, the, that, the infrastructure needed to support this, you'd need to widen roads and you would, you know, you'd need traffic lights. You, you just can't add that much traffic. I also understand that this is going to go to a sewer system and this is not, this place did not have a septic field. Is that correct? I don't understand how this can go to a sewer when I know people who are down closer to the sewer that couldn't hook into it because it doesn't have the capacity. Has that changed? Have they increased the capacity of the sewer system so that now other things like this miles away from where it is can hook into it?
There's no issue with capacity. There is no issue with capacity. The, and this applicant is extending the lines from Fairfield Road to this property.
So there's going to be nothing on Fairfield Road hooked into it except for his stuff?
He's extending the lines to his property. The lines are, when, when they're in place, it might be available to others, but he's not providing any specific connections to anyone other than his, his property.
So I was told, there is no, has been no capacity problems.
There's no, no capacity issues.
My other concern is you are covering, this is a twenty-nine acre parcel and you are covering over half of it with building in asphalt. I have a problem with water running across that field now that comes from that property. And is that going to increase the problem that I have washing across that field?
I'll ask Mr. Lyman to come back on, but I can tell you that the obligation of the applicant is to, is to introduce a stormwater collection system where there is none currently. And the obligations on the applicant are from both the state and the township regulations. And the testimony is that we'll meet it, but we could have Mr. Lyman come back on and, you know, you could.
Mr. Mr. Oakerson, they're going to answer your question with their professionals. So, Mr. Lyman, can you please place your camera back on? Okay, and I remind you, you remain under oath. So you've heard the question, Mr. Lyman, can you respond?
Yes, um, so we did analyze the, the location where, uh, where the existing erosion is occurring on the field. We identified that early on. Uh, we actually brought in the state soil conservation district to look at our design and, and give recommendations. We have accommodated those recommendations. Um, and we are designing the system in accordance with the, the state soil conservation district for the entire site. So yes, we, we have identified that, that location and have accommodated it with the proposed stone water design.
Remind you that you've already placed on the record that you can and you will comply with all of the technical requirements with regard to stormwater designed to the satisfaction of this movement.
That is correct.
We already have one field that's flooded. Every time it rains.
Okay, Mr. Oakerson, do you have further questions or comments?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you.
Next, I have Heidi Hunt.
Eileen, if you could just tell me, is she on camera?
Uh, here she is now.
Oh, okay, okay. I see.
There you go.
Okay, let me just swear you in first, Miss Hunt. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state and spell your name and give us your address.
Heidi Hunt, H E I D I, H U N T, two hundred Thoroughbred Drive, Howell, New Jersey.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Yeah, so I just wanted to express my concerns as well as, as everyone else has. Speaking for both myself and my husband, we don't want any more large warehouses in the area. This is a residential area and this warehouse is massive. Not to mention the sound, the increase in sound of all the trucks coming and going throughout the day. The traffic, the pollution, and also the, the appearance of it. You know, not only is it massive, but the wall that you're talking about, you know, in terms of the wall that's going to be built to, I guess, try and help keep the sound down. Not sure how that's going to help with the sound in terms of the trucks coming and going throughout the day. You know, that, that's, that sound's still going to be around. Um, I know you had mentioned seven hundred forty trucks per week in and out. In addition to that, um, it doesn't sound like you've accounted for the employees coming and going as well. And it sounds like that's twenty-four, seven in terms of the trucks coming and going. So I guess I have a concern as well in terms of the hours of the day that the trucks are coming and going. It, you know, it could be all hours of the night. So concerned about the traffic leaving on Oakerson as that's a real narrow road. And as other, um, uh, folks have also expressed their concern about, um, the fields being there, the children that are in the area, I wanted to express my concern as well. And then, you know, as well as the swim club on the other, on the other side of the road and all the children and, and folks leaving, coming and going there as well. Um, I just, I don't think this is the place where this type of warehouse. And I would just urge the board for the sake of all the Howell residents to vote this down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Joan Osborne.
Okay, we just need you to unmute, Ms. Osborne. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record and give us your address.
Joan Osborne, J O A N O S B O R N E, twenty-eight Veronia Street, Howell, New Jersey. Um, I just had some, uh, comments and questions. Um, as a former member of the environmental commission, I think I heard earlier today that, um, the environmental commission issued a letter, uh, to the applicant that, um, hadn't been responded to yet because their meeting with them was only very recent. Um, and they didn't have an opportunity, but indicated that they would go back and try to address their concerns. So my, uh, issue with that is, um, once an approval goes through, there's not really an incentive for an applicant to go back to the environmental commission and address concerns that were raised. I think the time to do that is before an applicant gets approved for anything. Um, to make sure that it's a condition of the approval, that they meet certain requirements. And to just blanketly state, oh, well, we'll do whatever they ask when we don't know what the ask is. It's kind of a, a hope and a prayer that that happens and probably won't get followed up on once an approval occurs. Um, the other concern I have is, um, I don't live in this neighborhood. I'm not in the Jerseyville area of Howell. But, um, I see that there, and, and we have seen in the past four years, uh, warehouses are being approved all over the township. These are going to greatly affect property values. And in a week where we all saw our assessments, um, our, our newest assessments come back, it, it's kind of interesting that these property values are going to, or these assessments are going to be based on a property value that these people are not going to be able to realize because no one's going to want to buy a house near a warehouse of that size, uh, generating that much pollution and that much noise. Um, so it, you know, I think the board really needs to consider um, the existing properties that are there and not just, um, you know, what one applicant wants to do with his property. Uh, this has already been voted down by the planning board. I don't know why, uh, the, the fact of just filing litigation results in a settlement where we're going to let you do it anyway, especially when in the interim from the time that this was voted down, the planning board approved changes to the zoning for the area that would not make this permitted use. So I would urge that, you know, this does not meet the direction we're going for this area. And it shouldn't be considered if the chance that we were to lose a litigation resulted in it being built. Well, then so be it. At least we tried. When we are in a situation where we have so many that we don't have an option about, here we do and we should not approve it unless we're made to approve it. Um, one of the questions that I had about the way this hearing is being handled is if there's a reliance on the testimony that was given back with the original application, which was over a year ago in twenty twenty-one, are these all the same board members? Did they all have to review all of that testimony? And if not, why are we voting on it with an abbreviated application? I have a concern with the idea of this sound wall as to who is going to be maintaining it after it's built. Um, these sound walls routinely become a scar and an eyesore as soon as they're built because they're not maintained and they fail often. So I would be concerned about that as some type of a resolution to make this project, um, more viable. And the final point I would make is the idea that, um, a promise to make tractor trailers comply with any, um, weight limitations or other traffic directions is kind of fanciful. They don't even know who the tenants are going to be. So a promise that they, these tenants are known and their employees will comply with laws or, or promises made by an applicant who will no longer be the employer of that person or ever be the employer of that person. Um, you know, it's just something that's being said to try to push this through. Again, I would urge like all the other commentators that this not be approved. It's not the right place for this type of facility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have Natalie Peretta.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I did.
Okay, if you could, uh, state and spell your name and give us your address.
Natalie Peretta, N A T A L I E, P E R R E T T A, one State Borough Road.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
So I just wanted to make a comment and voice my concern on all the noise that we have on this fair, I live off of Fairfield Road. And there's constant trucks going up and down the road. My whole entire house shakes. And, um, I just wanted to, you know, make the same comment as everybody else has been stating regarding all the existing traffic and any new warehouses that are built are going to cause even, even more traffic. We have potholes on our roads from all the construction on Fairfield Road. We have a school right down the street where there's bus stops all over Fairfield Road. And I honestly feel these warehouses shouldn't be built in such residential areas. And, you know, who, you're not taking the residents into consideration while building all these, closing a lot of traffic. And, you know, my family, we moved here from Brooklyn for some peace and quiet. And now we have constant noise all day long, all night long from the traffic. And it's very upsetting.
Thank you, Mr. Park. Is that all you have?
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate your comment. Thank you.
Next, we have Wayne Senator.
You're muted?
Yeah, Mr. Senatore, we just need you to, uh, unmute yourself.
Think I'm unmuted.
Okay, we hear you now.
Okay, good.
Swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record and give us your address.
Uh, my name is Wayne Senatore, W A Y N E, S E N A T O R E. I live at two forty-five Thoroughbred Drive in Freehold, New Jersey, oh, seven, seven, two, eight.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Rather than rehash everything that everyone else has said, um, and I don't know how many um, raised hands that you have in line on the queue here. But it seems quite obvious to me that we're all kind of in sync with not wanting these massive warehouses built in, in our neighborhood. I happen to live a half a mile north on Five Points Road, uh, north of Route thirty-three Business where our Wawa is. uh north of Route thirty-three Business where uh Wawa is. Albert and Jacqueline, who live right next door to uh where this uh building is going to be supposedly built, um basically said it as good as anybody else can. There's more traffic, and again, I don't want to reiterate the traffic and stuff, but it's quite obvious by everybody because we live here, we see it all the time. You can can't get across Route thirty-three now uh without having problems as it is. When you expect a seventy-foot tractor trailer to make a turn on off of thirty-three Business on the Howell Road, that'll that'll jam up that whole traffic area for days, you know. In any event, rather than rehash it, I just want to make a statement as to uh my feeling and and the feelings of many of the neighbors who live in this area uh in is and particularly in Bridle Patrick Estates where I live. How we feel about everything. So if you if you bear with me, I'm just going to read it because it's easier for me to remember everything. Okay. My my family and I and everyone in my immediate neighborhood uh I've spoken to don't want this. Uh, we don't have anything against progress in buildings, but we we don't want the we don't want to see any more massive warehouses in the Howell area. We understand that some were ne- needed, some were necessary and but as everyone else basically said, this area in Jerseyville is an area that this thing is going to look like a big massive eyesore in the middle of a residential area. Over the last few years, there have been many newly built warehouses and buildings with office spaces like the ones being proposed tonight in North Howell. And as previously said, Van Devere Road, Oakerson Road, Yellowbrook Road, Ketchum Road, Fairfield Road, all big warehouses, some empty, some have some tenants. And and so I don't even know if some of them are really full, but generally speaking, we have quite a few. Now, on top of all of this, we're looking at another developer trying to build two more, two more of these warehouses, one here on the Howell Road and one on Fairfield Road. So I think I think it's kind of like overkill. How many warehouses do we need? That's the real question to the board, the board. How many warehouses do we really need, especially these type of warehouses? My wife and I chose Howell more than twenty-two years ago to get away from the city life. We want to enjoy the peace and quiet that this rural area and farmland community had to offer. Twenty-two years later, we're starting to lose a lot of the farmland and a lot of the rural see in 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 the area. We did this to get away from traffic congestion that the greater New York area is notorious for. Up until twenty-one years ago, Howell was a perfect place for us to live. That was until the summer of twenty-one, when we were fighting to get back our peace and quiet neighborhood as evident by the last fiasco they had up in this section of Howell, when they were having all the rental pool uh pool parties and uh people were renting them in the backyard. So we had to go to the board, uh the mayor and uh have our objections heard at that time, too, the way you're kind of getting it all from everybody else now. Now, a year later, I we're we're again asking however, uh let me just reiterate. We went to the mayor and and the town board at that time, and they backed backed us in uh supporting us for everything that we wanted to do. We wanted to stop leasing their spaces, uh the 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 property to uh people. Uh, actually, it was it was um, they were renting out. So it was like a commercial business in the in the residential zone. So we ended up having an ordinance uh put in place to stop that. Okay? Now, what's happening is uh we need to have your support in in stopping all this continued massive constructions in our town. I mean, just ask yourself, do you really need more traffic and congestion at the intersection of Route thirty-three and Five Points Howell Road? Or Route thirty-three and Fairfield Road? Or and any nearby surrounding area? Everyone made great points. There's children all over the place. The my grandkids are in Howell Little League. They're playing every spring, fall, and halfway through the winter, they're playing uh baseball at the Howell Little League uh fields. They go to, my kids go to and their families go to the swim club. I mean, it's 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 too residential an area for this type of traffic. How many? I keep asking myself, how many traffic lights am I going to be willing to wait for before I can even cross over onto Route thirty-three? How much inconvenience will we have to experience due to major road construction because there's going to be all kinds of congestions when, as I stated before, a seventy-foot tractor trailer is trying to make a right turn heading east on Route thirty-three to go down Howell Road. That area is going to get blocked up. Someone's going to have to widen up the roads. That means that Howell Howell is going to have to step in and take care of that, widen those roads up. And you know what? How long it took to take care of the roads down on Adelphia? How how long that jam up was down there? So uh are we willing to accept increased air pollution from idle diesel tractor trailers? Loading and unloading twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year? Just as a side note, Wawa on Route thirty-three on the corner of Route thirty-three and Five Points Road, they're smart enough to have a sign posted out on their building that prohibits cars from idling while parking in their in their parking lot. Now, go in there in the wintertime and you'll see half of the cars are idling. They want to keep their cars warm so they don't have to go in and out. In that vein, you can also expect tractor trailers traveling up and down Five Points Road, even though there's a four-ton weight limit. We see them now. I just have a question. Is Oakerson Road also a five-ton uh weight limit road? Because if it is, I don't know how you're going to get in and out of Oakerson Road.
Hey, I think that's from your traffic engineer. You're muted. Yeah, you're still muted, Mr. Peretta.
But Mr. Fisher, if you could address the lack of weight restrictions on Oakerson, please.
Okay.
To the best of my knowledge, no, Oakerson Road is not weight restrict restricted.
Well, what's the town? The town posts the uh signs. What's the town saying? If it is, well, here's even a better question. If it if you don't know if it's weight restricted, how could you even develop a plan having tractor trailers going up and down Oakerson Road without even knowing about it? We know that, we know that Howell Road is, we know Howell Road is certainly uh uh four four-ton re- limit, and so is Five Points Road, which is the continuation of Howell Road going uh north of thirty-three Business. But how could, how could you even entertain it? Because that that would be impossible for any truck to go down, up and down those streets and in and out of a facility.
Sir, as I said, Oakerson Road is not weight restricted.
It's not weight. Okay. All right, fine. So uh I guess I just want to uh leave, leave you with a final question for the board. What do you think will happen to our property values when there's an air Amazon-like eyesore building sitting in the neighborhood for everybody to see? This is an easy way for people or an easy excuse for people to just leave the leave the neighborhood. Thank you for your time, and uh I hope we can convince you to um not approve this plan.
Thank you, Mrs. Senatore.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Bye.
Next, I have Josh.
Hey, Brian. We're getting close to the uh the ten o'clock chain.
Uh, let's get through, Mr. Uh, I don't know what Josh's last name is, but
Langenberger.
Langenberger.
I can be very brief.
And then let's let's have a conversation with our uh counsel.
Okay, Mr. Langenberger, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this boards the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely.
Please state and spell your name and give us your address.
Sure, it's Josh, J O S H, Langenberger, L A N G E N B E R G E R. I live at twenty-three Taunton Drive in Howell, New Jersey, zero seven seven three one.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
All right, thank you. Um, and tonight, as I heard everything, and I'm not I haven't been to many planning boards, to be honest with you, so I'm kind of processing this through my mind, but here tonight is that overwhelmingly, the residents of this town do not want any more warehouses. I don't think we can make it more abundantly clear. I don't actually even live near any of them. Um, uh, but it's it's not what's good for the town. That that's a resounding echo that you hear with every single comment tonight. And the variance really is the only leverage that the board has in order to prevent this. Now, to be honest with you, Mr. Pape, his team, they they build a nice warehouse. They do. You know, it's landscaped beautifully. We can argue about a four-foot wall and who's going to take care of it, but but that's not the point. You you did a fantastic job. It is a nice warehouse. The question is, is that nice warehouse supposed to be in Howell? Now, what's interesting about it is there was one thing that bothered me about the hearing tonight. And that was the board had given both Mr. Pape and engineer number one, so I can't remember your name. But they gave them an opportunity to say, you know, we made some of these extra upgrades because we care about your community. And and they didn't. They they basically said we were stuck doing these upgrades. I mean, that's paraphrasing what it was, but they had discussions and they were stuck doing them, and and it winds up in our favor. So that's great. And even the the civil planner at the end, she said, listen, there's there's no legal obstacles, but there aren't. There there aren't any. They did a great job. They addressed the sewage and the drainage and the plants and all of that. Fantastic. Like, that that's not, but 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 the truth of that, when it comes down to it, uh, you know, and and that road alone, it it's not a matter of uh if someone's going to die, if someone's going to get killed on that road. It it's just a matter of when. And I I don't envy the board's position in the place to say, hey, you know what? Your choice to say yes or no tonight. If you say yes, it happens. That headline you own. And and I wouldn't want to be in that position ever. So I applaud you for sitting there tonight and and being in a good place. But but tonight, really, what it comes down to, you're either voting with your neighbors, like me, and again, I don't live near them, or you're part of the system that is basically destroying our town one lot at a time. And to be quite frank, as of just a matter of public record, tonight, we will all know where you stand with Howell. The decision, of course, very easy for me because I stand with our neighbors and I stand with our community. And again, I don't even live near any of these. So I'd like you to take that under consideration. I appreciate the time uh to for hearing my comments. Uh, thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Have a good night.
So, Mr. Chairman, uh, just speaking to, I think it was Mr. Dorado's comment about the ten o'clock hour, we, this was anticipated. And it's always a positive when uh the board gets to hear from members of the community, members of the public and interested parties. So there's no no issue with that. Uh, but it was anticipated, and that's why the court had us uh have two special meetings planned. So the board does have a special meeting next week as well on the twenty-ninth. And that was noticed with this being carried to that night in anticipation of uh the public interest that it would engender. So my recommendation is that uh we carry this to the twenty-ninth that there would not be further public notice because it's already been noticed and it's being noticed tonight uh that it's being carried. And um Mr. Pape, I think uh your team has cleared that night as well, you know, in anticipation of the fact that this would be carried.
Mr. Co-chair, Mr. Chair, yes, the applicant and the applicant's professionals are available on the twenty-ninth. Um, before we move to the twenty-ninth, could we, could you tell us the number of people who have their hands up that have not yet been reached?
There's eight people with their hands, actually nine people with their hands raised, one already spoke once before, so and now people are adding. So there's more people raising their hand as I'm telling you that.
Man?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so then I just want to make uh two announcements because we did have two applications uh listed for for tonight. So just first on this application, the application of A A F F H W Property LLC, application S P one zero eight five will be carried to the board's special meeting on November twenty-ninth. It will be a virtual meeting beginning at seven o'clock. Uh, the login instructions will be available on the township's website. Also, any documents associated with the application are available in the planning department for inspection and copying during normal business hours. There'll be no further notice to the public. Um, also, the board had anticipated uh the possibility of hearing the application of A A F R uh H W Property LLC, S P one oh nine five uh tonight as well. Uh, that application will also be carried to the board's uh November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two meeting, special meeting, beginning at seven o'clock. It'll be a virtual meeting. Login instructions will be on the township's website. And all documents associated with that application will be available for review and copying uh during normal business hours at the planning department. No further notice to property owners on that one either. So when we come back on the twenty-ninth, we will pick up with uh members of the public. Mr. Pape will have his opportunity uh for closing comments. The board will deliberate and vote, and then we'll move on to the next application.
Wonderful. The chairman, board members, board professionals, members of the public. Thank you all. Good night. Happy Thanksgiving. See you next Tuesday.
Thank you, Mr. Pape.
Happy Thanksgiving. Okay, the special meeting, so there's no executive uh session.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Any uh, okay. I'll make a motion for German.
Second.
Third.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.